Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Kempin.
Here.
Mr. Kret.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Here.
Mr. Shepke.
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Here.
All right, you have an agenda in front of you. We would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion is prepared.
Mr. Schultz.
Second.
Mr. Edmonds. Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Kret.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Here.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
You've all received copies of September 11th, 2020 meeting minutes. Any discussion, comments, or do I have a motion? Mr. Edmonds.
Hope to approve as published.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kret. Mr. Kempin.
Yes.
Mr. Kret.
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika.
Yes.
Mr. Shepke.
Yes.
Mr. Schultz.
Yes.
Mr. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Tagle.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Well, seeing no one in the audience, I don't believe it'll be any public comment for items not on the agenda. So, item number five. Mr. Stratt, would you like to give us a report from the ZBAA?
Yeah, there were two items that were on the agenda. First item was on Rochester Road. They requested a six-foot variance from the 10-foot front yard setback. A 65-foot variance of the required 75-foot rear setback. It was approved. And it was really ironic, it's right on Rochester Road. I'm surprised to hear that I don't think it's going to be coming before us for site plan approval. Even though it's got quite an extensive, it's almost doubling the square footage. The other item is variance of...
Tom, who was that? I'm sorry, I missed one. What was, who's the petitioner?
Petitioner is Michelle from M and A D Properties L.C.
What building?
A small accounting office on Rochester.
In what Rochester?
Used to be a barber shop.
Just north of the Marathon, it used to be Marathon, now it's a Sunoco.
Sixteen and a half.
No, it's, yeah, about sixteen and a half on the, on the east side, yes.
Yeah. And the next variance was a home that was built on the, well, wanted to be built on the end of a cutoff of the street, which was also approved. And that was, I didn't think was a no-brainer, so that was fine.
You thought that was a good decision?
Yeah. Other than that, that was it.
All right, thank you. Next item, Mr. Savanna, the Department of Development Authority, Detroit.
Yeah, I did.
The DDA had a closed session meeting on last Wednesday. That's all like a report.
How do you do?
I wasn't there. Yeah, well, he did really well on that one.
Mr. Savanna, would you like to continue?
Yes, the PD4, the Big Beaver Center PD, the Archon John PD, received, was approved by a council last night, so it received CDP, PDP, and was resumed last night, and approved the PD agreement.
Okay.
So, the next step for them is final site plan approval.
All right. Are there any questions or comments on any of these reports? Ask Mr. Savanna a question? Absolutely may.
Reading the materials for tonight, an oil change operation came into play. Whatever happened to the oil change facility that got site plan approval on Rochester Road just north of Big Beaver?
They're moving on it. They've been, yeah, they're, they're moving. They were in, they've been in within the last week to talk to Paul about signage, so they're going.
Okay. I just hadn't been by there.
I know for sure they received final, I believe they have broken ground.
Okay, that was my question.
Good. All right, let's move on then to the zoning ordinance text amendment file number Zota 244, miscellaneous zoning ordinance revisions. And who will that lead to?
We're going to kind of tag team this evening.
Fully until done.
Yeah, but I will give Ben credit, or fault, depending how, how this goes over on the PowerPoint. Can everyone see that? Let me turn the light on.
So, this is actually Zota 2, right?
Don't get me started. Okay, so, we knew, we knew pretty well before the ordinance was, was adopted that because there was such a drastic change from our essentially 50-year-old document, that there was going to be some hiccups in the form of just some things that we weren't sure if they're going to work right, or, you know, some quirks, or typos, you know, things like that. So, we knew there was going to be some housekeeping. You know, we targeted about a year, year and a half from the date of approval, and that's about where we are now. So, that's kind of my introduction. And what we'll do is we'll kind of tag team our report. Ben, you want to, want to start off?
Yeah, just the only thing I would say is that it's not uncommon after a year or so after the adoption of a new ordinance that you kind of go through it and kind of clean up any housekeeping items. And so, in the past year, I've worked with the ordinance, hearing feedback from the development community, hearing feedback from the planning commission, as well as our own internal use of the ordinance. We discovered what we are considering 12 substantive changes for discussion and 14 minor amendments. And these minor are mostly capitalization, consistency, and labeling. They're more kind of Scrivener's error, typographical errors more than anything else. So, we're not going to get into detail about those 14 unless anyone has a particular question on what those might be. So, we really want to focus tonight on the 12 substantive changes.
So, what we'd like you to do is, because we're not going to focus on it, is have a look at them. If there's something you disagree with, send us an email, drop by, hand us a markup sheet, your comments on it, what have you. We don't want to disregard your input, but these modifications are so minor that it's really not working.
About the 14.
The 14, right. And also, our goal tonight is to get through six, looking at six of the 12 items. We don't want to be here all night, so that's, that's kind of our goal. So, if we get done six, we can go home.
Everybody approve of that?
The first one tonight is parking in front of the building. I don't know why some of the spacing is screwed up there, but the first item we're going to bring up for discussion is to allow parking in front of the building in the CB, GB, O, and RC districts. Brent and I went back and looked at how this evolved, this idea where you can't park, can't park in front of the building in these districts. And we really couldn't figure out if that was a decision, a policy decision, or it was just the way we're interpreting the ordinance. But how we interpret the ordinance now is that we are not allowing anybody to park in front of the building in these zoning districts. We're not talking about the form-based districts. There's a definite decision not to park in front of those buildings and have those buildings up front. This is for your general, your general business and your commercial business-oriented district. So, due to definition of front yard, which is the distance from the front property line to the building itself, parking is not permitted in those districts. However, we feel that a limited amount of parking should be allowed in those districts, primarily because many of the buildings in those districts already do have parking in front. And so, this is consistent with what's already going on in practice. While we think they should be allowed in front of the building, we still think they should meet the set, front yard setbacks. They shouldn't be allowed in the front yard setback. But there's that nebulous area between the front yard setback where the building is where we think that parking should be allowed. In addition, there is existing language in the ordinance that would mitigate any concerns over if parking would dominate the front yard. There's a requirement that only 50% of parking is allowed. 50%, the building can be, can be used for parking utilization. So, that kind of mitigates the concerns of over-parking or parking in front of the building and kind of muddying the site up.
If you think of in terms of geographically where these areas are, think of Rochester Road in the non, not at the intersections, not in the nodes, because we don't want parking in front of the buildings, in most cases for the nodes. But think internally, where exactly, like Ben said, we've already got a lot of buildings that has parking in front. There's a lot of non-conformities.
Can I move up to the, am I allowed to move up or be on camera? So, the current requirement, as we have currently interpreted, Brent and I going back and forth on this, is the front yard is defined as a distance from the, from property line to the building itself. And the ordinance clearly states that no parking in the front yard. So, this distance we're considering is basically a no parking zone, irregardless of where the setback line is. So, there's a, there's this kind of nebulous zone in between the setback line and the front building line, which we've interpreted in the ordinance right now to not allow parking.
Can I add one thing, just to be clear? So, the setback line, let's say the required setback's 30 feet. In this instance, roughly, the required setback line is the bottom line, that you can barely see there. But the building in this case is setback about 100 feet. You can't park in that anywhere, including that 70 feet that's non-required.
Obviously, there are, most buildings in these zoning districts all do have parking in this area. However, new buildings, we require not allow parking in this area. So...
Ben, before you get off that, can you help me understand? I always thought that the front yard was the setback line for the building, front yard setback. That's how I've always interpreted that.
The definition of front yard, or front yard is the distance from the property line to the front of the building. And then, there's a front setback, which is different from the front yard. That's a definition, isn't it? It's in the article two.
But we're talking about required set, like if the building is required to be setback 30 feet to, let's say that's the red...
That's a setback.
Right, that's the red line. But the owner chooses to build a building further back.
That's the front yard. The front yard and setback can be the same thing. In many cases such as this, the front yard is much greater than required setback.
Do we have requirements for the front yard?
The front yard, there are no requirements, except in the, in the form-based district, you build two lines, which are essentially required minimum front yards.
So, that front yard line can be whatever it is, but it's decided by where the location of the front facade or base of the building is.
It can be, essentially, it can be no less than setback line, but it can be as long as the property owner desires, as long as it doesn't get, start getting into the rear yard setback. And its definition is, again, defined from the front of the building to the front property line.
So, if you think in terms of the Oakland Mall area, where they've got a lot of buildings with parking in front? If it's, I have to check the zoning, but if it's, you know, zoned in any of those categories, it's non-conforming.
So, what we're proposing is you, it's more of a reinterpretation of what we're writing is you're allowed to park in this, this outside of the front setback in front of the building. However, no more than 50% of the front linear, uh, building can be, can be used for parking. And that, that currently exists in the ordinance for these districts. So, this is, this 50% is nothing new. The only thing we're taking out is this parking should not be located in the front yard. So, it's simply a strike through of that language and keeping in this 50%.
Why, why do we say parking shall not and then say it cannot be more than 50%? Those, those two statements are totally contradictory to each other.
It's an inconsistency that we're trying to clean up.
But go back to the prior slide of the setbacks, next one. Where would parking be allowed in front of that building now? If we strike?
From the setback line to the front yard line, wherever that, wherever, whatever that distance may be.
All the way across the front of the building?
Well, there's a 50% front linear limitation, which is, which currently exists in the ordinance.
And that's of the property dimension, 50% of the property dimension?
It's the front, it's the front building line. It's no more than 50% of, from this corner to this corner.
So, 100 feet long, they can park 50 feet of...
50 feet of parking.
So, Oakland Mall is still going to be non-conforming?
If it's in these districts, yes.
Oakland Mall's a unique case. Now, what we're, so we apply would be those outlawed buildings that are in front of Oakland Mall.
Yeah.
A lot of those have 100% parking in front of the building.
So, they're all going to be non-conforming?
They're already non-conforming now, especially because they're non-conforming in two respects now. They're non-conforming in they're parked in front of the front yard, and they have more than 50%. This is bringing them, this is bringing them into greater compliance than what currently exists.
Lesser non-conformity.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't seem to be any limitation, though, in that 50% parking. They could spread that out over 100 feet, couldn't they? If it's 50%, let's say, they've got room for, if they had 100% parking, 10 cars. So, they're limited to five cars now. But they could spread those five car spots over the entire front of the building, couldn't they?
Well, how Brent and I have interpreted this is that, like, an example we use, if the building's 100 feet linear, linear feet, 100 feet linear, across the front line, only 50% of that, or 50 feet, can be used for parking.
I agree. But is it going to be consolidated into one lump, or can it be spread across?
Doesn't matter. If it can be 25, 25, it can be, or, you know, it can be 10, 40. I, we don't, I don't think we want to get into the minutia of where it can be located in front of the building, as long as it's not more than 50%.
Go ahead.
Yes, but, going into minutia, but I think the problem becomes, they can, on their, on their blackout in front of that building, they could put five parking spaces, but what's to stop somebody else from parking between those five parking spaces? I think that's, that's the issue. How do you want to enforce that? Do they have to take all that blackout out between those parking spaces if we're using Mike's example here?
Well, that, the intent would, would be, would be to have 50% of it asphalted and 50% of it, and landscape open space. That's the, that's the intent. I see where you're going. You're, that's like a really, that's an attorney way of thinking there, Mr. Hudson. I commend you on the, on the, I'm joking, but...
No, you're not.
That's an interesting question. I mean, the cost of asphalt, I would, I would think that that wouldn't happen. But clearly, the intent is to, is to have half, half these, the area in the front yard as open space.
Wait, Tom, Tom raises this.
I just want to make this really clear. That's 50% of the total front yard or 50% of the area between the setback and the building? Either. It's 50% of linear feet. It's 50% of this distance can be parking. So, essentially, from here to there can be parking or some sort of combination of... 50% of the linear feet, so that you're seeing the width of the property?
The property or the...
Building. Oh, the building. 50% of the building can be parking.
50% of the front of the building can be occupied by parking.
And that means the spaces are how wide?
They're nine and a half wide by 19 long.
Okay. Now, I understand.
Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I might understand that now the setback is going to be the setback for the parking as well as the building?
Yes.
So, you're interpreting that to be the setback for the parking as well? So, whatever we had before is now going to be applicable.
If your question was, is the required, is required setback, the setback line on the bottom, would apply to both parking and the building?
Yes.
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 So, now that, the berm and everything else that could modify that is no longer part of this. We weren't giving any credit for any of the berming or anything like that between the street and the parking.
Uh, I don't know what you mean by giving credit.
Well, I thought we were, but forget that. The other question I have, or the other item I'd like to point out is that, in my opinion, we, next to Starbucks, we just approved all that parking and revamped all that. To me, that was horrible, because what they had before with the trees and everything else, now what they've got is, you see a sea of asphalt out there with all the cars.
That's Big Beaver, though. And I hear what you're saying.
I understand, but I'm just showing you as an example of having parking in front. I really, I think the intent was that we were trying to limit as much as possible any of the parking in the front.
Across, across the entire city?
Entire face, yeah. So, that we were asking, asking them to put it on the side. My concern with that was, I remember when this came up, was the fact that we're trying to promote, you know, walkability. And we're trying to make the entrance to be actually facing the street, but yet we're going to park on the side. It doesn't make sense, just like the churches, the old-style churches used to have an entrance facing the street, but all their parking was in the back, and everybody snuck in from the back, never used the front entrance. You know what I'm saying? There's a, there's a conflict there that I have in my own mind, a conflict. I'm not sure which is the best solution.
Can I, can I? I agree with you. I mean, I think that's, that's the, kind of the balance here is, because we're hearing also from the guy at the counter who wants to put in a whatever, a commercial, and he's, and he's, "What do you mean I can't park in front of my building?" You know, the guy next door's doing it. So, we're, we're trying to strike a balance between the open space, the walkability, the landscaping, and also giving the potential business owner a break on the parking, letting him put some parking.
I have no problem with the, with the retail, but I have a problem with the office. And O was a part of this. So, that's where I'm saying, you know, where do we draw the line? I don't know. I mean, I'm not trying to promote one thing or another. I'm just using the example that I saw that I really was very, I wasn't happy with when they renovated all that parking area and how great they were going to do it. It really is, they got twigs up there for trees.
Schultz?
Looking at the graphic that's on the screen, currently, they can have parking from the two vertical columns of parking. They can have it from the setback line to the back of the building, back of the property, right?
They can have anywhere behind this, the front of the building line, all the way back.
They can't use from the, from the required setback to the front of the building for key parking?
No.
No.
And that's the, that's the crux of the discussion.
Retailers will tell you that they want, they want that trigger. They want, they want customers to be able to see that parking in front of the building.
And, and the intent, we're not suggesting that we change their parking requirements in the form-based district, because those are really intended to be more pedestrian-oriented type districts. These are for more auto-oriented, commercial-type districts, CB, the GB, which are more auto-oriented, retail-type districts.
I still have a concern as it relates to that, though, even with that, I agree with the commercial. But the office, I'm not too, I'm not too sure about. I have a problem with that.
The office district or the office use?
Office use.
Use?
Period.
See, it's difficult, because if you start regulating building forms by use, what happens? What happens when the building changes use without, we have no way to monitor that one?
The probability of office being commercial, I don't think is that great. You know, I mean, an office building is going to be an office building, it's functionally not going to be that practical to do. But that being said, I, I, I just, why aren't we including that, then? We're actually, why not have light industrial in there, then? You have different regulations for different buildings, right?
I can tell you why.
Why?
We talked about it, and actually, the first rendition had it in here, and I said, "I'm going to need to take it out." Because we have sustainable development provisions that allow, that provide administrative flexibility on parking in front of buildings in the IB district. So, that's, that's why we took that out. But these districts don't have that IB flexibility.
Well, they don't.
No.
We're not promoting...
Well, I mean, we could, we could go there.
Yeah, I would think so. You know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I know where you're coming from.
I'd like to see you along from.
I mean, Mike, you're on the, you two are on the Sustainable Development Committee.
We are.
What do you think?
I kind of like the carrot spread across all the different districts. If the builder wants to make some concessions and give us some stuff that really be helpful, I think maybe that little parking chip may be a chip that we could use.
So, allow, allow parking in front of the building as long as it complies and meets with the sustainable development?
Yeah. So, it's sustainable.
Well, then have to meet the criteria for...
Right, yeah.
But I'm also thinking, you know, we said, not jest, but half a jest, that if we're going to limit it to 50%, and we want the other 50% green space, why don't we say that?
Sure.
But then, but then do we get into, green space includes pavers? Because then it's not green space, it's hardscape.
Well, if it's, if it's through the SDP, there's standards there that'll, that'll take care of that, I believe.
But if we were to say 50% of this area and then say the remainder is in green space, that should be green space, not hardscape, like, like a brick patio.
And I presume that everybody who's got it right now, paving or whatever, their grandfather into it, that's just new development. So, we won't have a ripping up of parking allowed in this area?
I like the sustainable development option. I'm confused. Qualify what I think I just heard.
What we talked about is, basically, what I, what I heard was that a good approach, an appropriate approach, this may be application of sustainable development provisions, which we currently have in the IB district, which basically means in order to park in front of a building in instances like this, an applicant's going to have to get pre-qualified sustainable development provision, they're going to have to qualify as an SDP, Sustainable Development Project, which means they're going to have to go before the committee, which is comprised of the planning director, the building official, the engineer, and two planning commission members. And then, once they pre-qualify, then they can put the parking in.
Go ahead, Simon, go ahead.
Well, in order to pre-qualify, you've got to meet criteria, which includes impervious pavements, rain gardens, native plant species, appropriate lighting, et cetera, et cetera.
But are you saying that the, the pavers that you're talking about are part of the 50% within the 50%?
Um, I don't, I don't believe, I think, I think that you could use the pavers in the parking portion of it, and that would be fine, but I don't believe you could put, use the pavers in the other 50%. I think it's got to be non, non-hardscape.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with that. Yeah, I do agree with that.
But that would be one qualification measure of using pervious pavement for the parking area, but not for the other.
Is that an option in addition to what we're talking about making the change here, like a...
I think, no, we'll just go along with this new, we'll park only 50%.
And we essentially say that you can't park in the front yard unless you're pre-qual, you have pre-qualified status.
So, we're taking this off the table, this 50% there.
Well, that's open, that... No, I think you could be, just keep the 50% to it.
Well, that's what I'm asking. It's another, it's another option that the developer has, the petitioner would have.
Right.
He can either do this, or he said, "No, I want to park along the whole front," so then you have to go forward.
That's a good point. So, in other words, you could, you could park half by right. If you want to park the whole thing, or most of it, you're going to have to...
Sustainable development.
Sustainable development, so there's a carrot. That's a really, that's a good idea. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm thinking of the pavers that are also grass, that grow in between, you know, on top. Those are really for temporary, temporary parking. They're not really for very active parking. Like, for example, if you wanted to have a fire root around or drive going around a building or something like that. But I think we'll stick with what you've got.
Schultz?
I, yeah. I understand where Mr. Stratt's coming from with temporary parking, but when I was in China last year, I was on dozens of parking lots that are used every single day by passenger cars, trucks, and buses, and they are all the blocks with grass growing through them. You saw them everywhere, and they are not for temporary parking. They're, they've been there for years, and they're servicing the parking very, very well. I have photographs that I'll be happy to bring.
And this 50% option, couldn't we just easily say that, you know, landscape area not used for particular parking? And then, do we care if the guy wants to put some pavers out there and, you know, whoever knows what? I mean, I don't know that we want to limit the creative aspect of what they do. As long as they're saying, "You can't park a car here." I don't care what you put, and you just can't park a car.
Or even a fountain? You know, that's, that's not greenscape.
We, right now, I think we've read it as the 50% limitation, and we haven't, we haven't dictated what the other 50% has to be.
Well, we're saying we don't want it to be parked.
We don't want to be parking, but it can be, we don't, I don't, we, as we interpret it now, we haven't, we haven't concerned ourselves with what the other 50% is.
So, the other 50% can be asphalted and just be striped so that you can't park it? That's what we're saying.
That's, that's how it, that's how we've interpreted this point, yes. And the, and the point was to not, was more a visual aspect, to not have parking and take up the whole front of the building.
Now, that situation hasn't come up, and clearly, the intent, the intent is not that you'd asphalt half of it and put upper blocks up so you can access it. We could, we could, we could strengthen that, so that, and that's, that's a no-brainer.
I think we have a good direction of what, that there wants to be a limitation on what can go on the other 50%.
Outlet development, is there considerations in this regard? As far as, say, say, the entire front of Oakland Mall was parking right now, and they decide, oh, they want to put another restaurant in some of their... in some of their open space, say, towards John R. perhaps? How would that impact of this be on something like that?
It's actually increases, it's permitted, and it increases the, it makes it more conforming, and we actually.
So they would have to rip out parking lot and put in green space to build a new building?
That's the way it is now, is essentially, it's used for parking, so they're gonna, they're actually eliminating parking in front of the main building, and replacing with buildings, so it's more, more conforming. But they can't park in front of the new building. That's, and they don't like that.
You could turn that into a seasonal, like if that was an eatery, patio seating or something for seasonal use, or you could, you know, to, you know, be an attribute to the business, so that it'll make it more desirable.
That's a really good point. That's a really good point. That's not asphalt. You could, it could be brick, it could be a combination of, it would be an amenity, it would look good, but it would be hard surface.
And make it more for a walkable area, it would be a very desirable thing to have.
Right.
But, but getting back to Mr. Schultz's point, I, if somebody, I'm, I'm not in favor of just being, saying, well, we're just gonna stripe off the part of the angle stripe, that's not good.
Right.
Because somebody's just gonna park there all the time.
Well, that, and I, I think that we've got the sense that we need to put additional language in about what the other 50% can be used for.
Yeah. I think we've got some.
Or what the intent of this, the intent of it is, because there's, you can't legislate every possible condition. But you certainly can explain what your intent is.
We've got some very solid direction.
Are you, are you planning also in that green belt area, if I may, where no parking is permitted at 10-foot, or whatever it may be? Are we talking about burning that? Are we talking about adding any kind of a thing to block?
There's landscaping requirements.
There is, you're still gonna enforce that?
Yes, yeah, there are landscapes.
So we still have that in there?
It wouldn't change.
It wouldn't change. I'm not talking about changing landscape requirements. So let me just summarize what I heard. So I've, I've heard that the 50% parking in front should be allowed essentially by right, and then if you wanna get up above that 50%, you have to go in with a sustainable development option, and additional language in regards to what can be used in the other 50% that's, that's non-parked area. Is that the direction?
And this is only new, new plans, it's not existing.
Right.
Maybe you're gonna put some language in making it contiguous parking, so that we've got a block of parking instead of being spread across the whole building.
But hold on, what if, what if these people wanted to put 50% of their 50% on the left of the building and the right of the building, and put a green space in the middle, then it's not contiguous, and you've hamstrung them, and they can't.
All right, Mr. Schultz, I hadn't thought about that.
But if they put a driveway connecting the two, it's gonna look like hell anyway.
And that would be, let's say, there are two tenants in that building.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Two separate entrances.
You can't possibly legislate every possible condition.
Sharpen your pencils.
Would you go to the language? I think it's the next slide. I wanna make sure I'm understanding. That wording says 50% of the total site's linear feet, not the building.
Along the building front line. So it's where the building front line meets this total site's linear front, 50% of the building line cannot be occupied by parking.
Yeah, I could read both ways.
Yeah, I, I can interpret that as it's the.
Total site.
Site linear feet, and that's measured at the building front line. So it's a, you, let's say the, the site was 200 foot wide, and the building's 100 foot wide, so what's? So then, you're, you're saying it's two, they're allowed 50% of that 200 linear feet, from, from that English.
Of the total building's linear feet?
They'll be occupied by a parking lot?
Doesn't say total building, it says total sites' linear feet.
Along the front building line is where we interpret that distance, along the front building line, that's adjacent to the, to the linear, to the, to the site's linear feet.
So what we, we'll clean it up.
The intent was to only limit it in terms of the building, 50% of the building, but we'll clean up the language.
That's linear feet of the building. Not the, not the total site.
This is like, this, this is something we've been kinda wrestling with before.
Not the building, not the total linear feet along the front of the building.
This is good, this is good dialogue.
All right. The next one is uses, and specifically automotive and transportation uses in the IB district. When the IB district was created, was in recognition of that there's a lot of difficult sites to redevelop, and especially sites that can probably be reused for different uses than what they were initially created for. That being said, it was kind of what someone had deemed the Wild, Wild West when it was created, and so.
Cowboy town.
One of your partners.
One of your partners.
Cowboy town.
Who's that? Well, anyways, he interpreted it that way. So we opened up, we opened up the allowable permitted uses, and the only uses that we really categorized in sort of any special regulation was automotive uses, and this in regards to automobile sales, repair, what else, Brian?
Automotive repair is one of the biggies. The reason, the reason the automotive, let me jump on automotive repair, because we've had a number of applications coming forwards for automotive repair, and they're special use. And some of the, in some of the instances, like I can think of one, where the guy had an, had a business, automotive repair business in Troy, and he was doing so well, he needed another building to, to house some cars in and do some work. He wasn't doing any site work. He was just gonna use the building, and our standards actually don't require, don't, don't permit, excuse me, our standards do not permit outdoor storage of vehicles, so everything was gonna be in the building. So he came to the counter and said, what do I have to do? Well, he needed to fill out a special use application. It's $3,300. And you need a site, you need to hire engineer, and you gotta give us a site plan, and all the other information, it's gotta be sealed. So right, right out of the gate, because he wants to reuse a building, he's on the hook for seven, eight thousand bucks to just to simply reuse a building, because it's a special use, even though it's zoned IB. If it wasn't special use, if it was permitted by right, and zoned IB surrounded by IB, it's administrative site plan approval, he saves thousands of dollars and probably two months. So in that instance, because of the fact that, you know, all, all the activity has to be inside a building, the, the secondary impacts really are, are there.
And that, and that's kind of what our, our discussion here is, that may the concerns that we have in regards to drive-through, outdoor storage, noise, vibration, et cetera, those are, those are handled in, in other standards and other requirements. And, and on the right, there's a list of uses by right, which one could argue might have a greater impact on adjacent properties than, than a vehicle, vehicle repair shop that's located inside a building. So with that being said, we're recommending that some of the automotive uses become permitted uses, and not, not have to go through the special use process. That being said, I just wanna be fully disclosure here in some of, some of our concerns. There are a few areas, and these are highlighted in red, where the IB district does back up to residential. And there are five areas which we have highlighted here that are adjacent to residential. That being said, of the thousands of parcels that are IB, I believe there are about maybe less than 100 that are adjacent to residential uses. But again, like I said before, a lot of the concerns about incompatibility uses is dealt with with other standards and the ordinance. So what we are recommending is that we change the special use designation to permitted use for the following use categories: recreation, vehicle sales, vehicle repair stations of Brent Talk To, antique and classic vehicle sales, ambulance facilities, and vehicle rental. Fueling stations, vehicle washes, and vehicle auctions will all remain as special uses.
Why couldn't you, if you're concerned about these four different areas in Troy, where there happens to be these districts abutting residential? Make those sections special uses, and if it doesn't abut a residential section, make it a permitted use. If you're concerned about maybe bothering the neighborhood there, that would give the neighbors some assurance, they might have a voice.
What that would do, that's a good point, Mike, what that would do is that, that would trigger the notification for everyone at the 300 feet, so they have a chance, they get notified, and they have a chance to attend, a chance to come to the counter and look up the application.
Yeah, we would add it as a special supplemental use standard, essentially, which is an article, I think, six. And I would simply say, if you're adjacent to residential, you are required to go through the special use process. So would you see any concern around that?
Actually, I think that's a preferred way of doing it, so we don't get accused of doing some spot zoning, kind of thing.
So I, I would say we should do it by supplemental use arrangements.
I like that, Mike.
I didn't have time to look through the new ordinance before the meeting. What is our definition of antique and classic? I've got a 110-year-old Cadillac probably qualifies as an antique.
Just the driver. I got, I got a, I got a hunch it's not even defined.
I think it is.
Antique, antique automobile sales?
You're not gonna legislate every possible condition.
My, my concern is with vehicle and recreational vehicle sales, because you can drive through some communities in this county and other counties where old retail buildings, when the retail fails, the entire street is lined with used car lots. And I do not believe that is what we want in the city of Troy. So I, you're gonna have to do some plain and simple talking to get me to make used vehicle sales, recreational vehicle sales a possibility. Only one of nine, but you're gonna have to talk like a Dutch uncle to convince me of that.
An antique and classic is 26-years-old, it's on page 29.
Those are gonna be indoors anyway, so it doesn't matter. I'm not gonna have them sitting outside.
Tire places are one of the things that really, it can be very, very loud, noisy from your air impacts, taking, taking lug nuts off, on and off. If you go to a bell tire, somewhere where they're changing lots of tires in the summer when the doors are open, for about a half a block away, you're gonna hear those impact, right, just buzzing and banging away. So you have to be real careful sometimes when it comes to automotive repair. The standard stuff is fine, I think, but tire changing, or anything where you have heavy usage of air tools, can be very, very noisy, whether they're ripping tools, air chisels, or air impacts, it can be very, very noisy.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
It's just about residential.
What we've got in that instance is all activities have to be contained within a building. And like you said, if it's the wintertime, the doors are closed, it's less, if it's summertime, it's open. If, if, if the doors are open, we do have noise standards, and you can't exceed, I believe it's 65 decibels at the property line. So if, if, if they're in excess of our noise ordinance, then, then they'd get a, a visit from one of my guys and show up and say, you need to, you need to either cease and desist what you're doing, you need to close your doors and eliminate this noise problem. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I, I understand, you know, I, I'm listening, but it's ultimately gonna boil, it's gonna boil down to operationally, because they're gonna, they're gonna come before the planning commission, it's a tire-changing place, and it's all good, and they're gonna meet our standards, and then get approved. And then when it's functioning, then that, that's when the rubber's gonna hit the road in terms of the noise. That's when, that's when we're gonna really find out how loud it is.
Well, especially use, you already granted it, once you've already granted it, you're pretty, you're pretty locked in. You know, 29 decibels is pretty loud. I mean, that's, when I was working in the factories, 29 decibels is usually what the earplugs will cut out, so it's, it's still gonna be fairly noisy in that 65 decibels. That's quite a bit of noise.
Well, I, I hope that the, the suggestion that they require to go through a special use permit for those that are abutting residential might alleviate some of your concerns in regards to impact on residential.
You know, for the, for the average repair facility, probably not, wouldn't, wouldn't be a, a problem, but somebody that's constantly changing tires, when you're constantly on new car, new tire sales and stuff like that, this is gonna be a pretty consistent thing all day long.
But I think the fact that, you know, one of the things we said with the new, with the new ordinance when we approved it, was, it was to protect the neighborhoods, and so if you're, you know, we're already doing that, and we're saying that those kind of uses cannot be used for those sites that abut residential, is that correct?
Well, I think what, what, what it would say was, if, if these sites are but residential, they want, they propose like an automotive use, automotive repair use, it would be a special use, a special use. If not, it would be by right.
They're currently reviewed by special use, so that wouldn't, wouldn't change any of those that are adjacent to residential.
I've got a historical question. Before this rewrite, what was the capabilities in these locations? Has that changed?
No, it was special use before, I believe, in the Lake.
Nothing really has changed in that regard.
So it's really, the question is, are you, you know, do we, do we wanna take a bit of a leap of faith and eliminate some of the special use requirements for some of these users, or you wanna keep it the status quo?
Can you go back to the list?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're really talking vehicle, vehicle and recreational vehicle sales, vehicle repair stations, antique and classic vehicle sales, ambulance facilities, and vehicle rental.
And the one that we get most often is just vehicle repair stations. I think we're willing to give, give a little bit on the vehicle sales. I think that's lots of concern, but that's a special permitted. It's really the vehicle repair stations where we'd like to open up the uses for those.
It's really the, it's vacant light industrial buildings. They're two, three thousand square foot. They're sitting there, been vacant for years, and someone can go in there and start working on cars for a relatively cheap rent.
That'd be a lot different than a, a, a long, narrow building where you've got several doors that would open up. And if you put qualifiers on any, any one of these special usages, I think that where they, where they qualify, like you were talking before, testing, air testing, noise levels and stuff like that, to the, to your satisfaction, something in writing at least, I think that you could let any of them probably go through.
Yeah, and I, and I think you raised a really good point with the tire place.
Yeah, they whistle and they rap.
All day long, yeah.
I have no problem with any of the permitted uses other than vehicle and recreational vehicle sales, which I think should remain a special use in all locations adjacent to, to residential or auto.
My comment, I like the idea, but I don't know about limiting it to adjacent. I think maybe we should put a proximity to residential, because there may still be one lot between them, but it may not be enough to really properly isolate from residential impacts.
In the past, we've talked, like kennels cannot be within 300 feet of residential. At least they used to be. I don't know if they still are, but, you know, that might be a good radius to, you know, within 300 feet of residential property line.
Okay, we can find the, that's the, what kind of distance, if that's what the commission wants.
That sounds, that sounds good.
I mean, I think we're, we're not talking about that many parcels, then, still.
And we don't get a lot of, a lot of people.
No, I think used car lots can become a blight on our community.
You were talking about, any of these uses not just vehicle sales, right? That they have to be a special use for any of these, if they're within a certain feet of, or are you talking about just for vehicle sales?
Yeah, I was thinking any of those uses.
Within, within a certain distance of residential is special use?
Yeah, still require special use in most cases, otherwise would be permitted.
But vehicle sales will remain special use in all instances?
That's one person's opinion. I don't know if anybody agrees with me or not.
I don't, I don't hear anyone arguing with you, so we'll take that as.
Yes. Vehicle repair, antique and classic vehicle sales, ambulance facilities and vehicle rental will be permitted uses. Vehicle recreational sales will be special use, and those vice mentioned were permitted uses will require special use if they're within a certain distance of residential. Let's define what that distance is, whether it's 300 feet, 500 feet. We'll come back with what the actual distance is gonna be. We'll come back with what the actual distance is going to be.
Good.
Speaking of automotive transportation use group, we do not have oil change facility as a listed use in the ordinance. So we are asking that we, we're just recommending that it get added as a use into the list, because in previous practice, they are treated similar to vehicle repair. And vehicle repair have additional use regulations in section 2.6.26, and often, oil change facilities, one, can't meet these regulations, and two, really are not practical as to what they're, what they're engaged. Specifically, it's a, it's a lot, minimum lot size, but I think they're required, I think it's 20,000 or more square feet. And so a lot of times vehicle or oil change facilities don't need that large an area.
They're really not automotive repair, because you stay in your car. In fact, you're not allowed out of your car.
Right.
If you drive by and there's more than one or two cars parked, queued there, you keep going, and you come back later. So there's not a proliferation of cars.
Right.
And they're really not a car wash, because a car wash has the vacuums that are really loud that you can use. So they're a lot less intense than a car wash, than automotive repair, so they, they really should have their own category.
So we're simply adding vehicle change, oil change facility into the list of uses, and we're allowing them as permitted uses, and the CB, the GB, the IB district, and the PV, and this changes based on the last discussion we just had in regards to vehicle repair.
Just one comment.
Yes.
Just don't build the, you can't exit your vehicle into any of this ordinance language, because there are certain chains that require that you exit your vehicle and sit in the waiting room so that they can vacuum your interior and lots of. So saying that you can't get out of your car is a limiting situation.
Yeah. In terms of neighbors, oil change places really are pretty good neighbors, because they, they usually open around seven or eight, and by 4:30, 5:00, by 6 o'clock, they're closed.
They're a lot better than a car wash.
They're a lot better than a car wash.
Yeah. And, and we're not recommending any sort of additional use regulations with this. We're just listing the SA permitted use. Somewhat similar issue to oil change. Wireless communication facilities are not a use listed in the use regulations. However, they are, they do have supplemental use regulations in section six. So that being said, we're asking first off that they be put into the, to the schedule of use regulations and classify it as a permitted or special use based on the appropriate districts.
They're really hard to find in the ordinance.
They're hidden, they're hidden. So this really is just kind of cleaning up what currently exists. The tricky issue is there's the telecommunications, telecommunications act, so there are some federal requirements in terms of what we have to follow in terms of our allowance, and particularly, we have to, we have to allow co-location for existing facilities. So this is really in regards to new tower facilities, not necessarily those new smaller whip antennas that are on top of buildings, this is for new towers. So with that being said, we, we find that new proposed freestanding towers should be reviewed under special use application.
They use palm trees, right, disguised?
Which it kind of requires now, but you have to, you have to go through the provisions of 630 and kind of figure it out. It's not real obvious, it's really kind of tricky to use.
So this, again, this mostly is a cleanup to what we currently have, in terms of actually just making it easier for people to find. So a wireless communication facility which complies with section 6.03b1, which is the co-location that I discussed earlier, and that's required under the telecommunications act, that's a permitted use in any zoning district. A wireless communication facility, which is a freestanding tower, is not permitted in the residential districts. It's a special use in the CF district, and special use in the CB, GB, IB, O, OM, et cetera. On top of that, they still have to comply with the supplemental use regulations, which talks about screening and, and there's setbacks and height requirements, et cetera. So this is just a, another process they had to go through, which was not very clear in the existing ordinance.
It's really not changing anything, it's just making it more clear.
And all the special use applications do receive notification to 300 feet?
Yes.
Do we have any limitations, guidelines, or restrictions on the adding of cell phone transmitters to existing buildings? If Troy Place gets very many more cell phone and, and is mounted on their rooftop screening, it's going to fall down.
I think that's covered under first, I think that's covered under 630b1.
Yeah. We do have, we don't have, you, you, there's no limitations on the number you can put that, put up with them, if they're a co-location.
But they're allowed to go out, even though they're on the roof, they're allowed to be outside, they're a, a utility of some kind, they're allowed to be outside the rooftop screening? We, we require that they, they screen all the mechanicals on top of their building, and then they bolt 45 cell antennas to the outside of the rooftop screening.
Yep.
Some of which may or may not be the same color as the rooftop screening.
They are supposed to come in and get approval of, of the screening, and they're supposed to be architecturally compatible with the principal building. Now, whether or not we're actually getting permits for them, I, I don't know.
What is the location you're referring to? Troy Place over at Big Beaver and, and Coolidge.
In fact, we have another section of design, appearance, and support of all accessory buildings and antenna shutter reviewed and approved as to minimize distraction, reduce visibility, maximize second appearance, and ensure compatibility of surroundings.
And I, I want to make it clear to the public, that's not the only building in town, but that's the one that I see most often. And, I mean, anybody that has a tall building is bolting cell phone transmitters and receivers all over them and collecting rent.
Not only in Troy, all over.
Oh, yeah, all over. Go, go out to, go out to Farmington Hills Franklin area and look at the Knollwood Country Club water tower, which probably hasn't had water in it in 25 years, and it is just covered with, with cell phone.
And it negates the need for additional towers.
That's right.
Good thing.
But sometimes towers are not as unattractive as a building with all of these things bolted to the top of it.
Well, I guess I'd rather look at a tow, I'd rather look at an ugly tower than get a drop call. It boils down to.
So yes, they, they are supposed to come in and get, get reviewed. Change your question.
And I, I can tell you anecdotally that we get a lot of, probably once a week, once every two weeks, we get an application for swapping out of equipment, existing towers and existing buildings. They're just, they're taking the old equipment out, and putting the new equipment up and just swapping it out.
Who's, who's coming forward? Is it the, the company that owns the equipment, or is it the building owner?
It's the company that owns the equipment.
So they know the rules.
Oh, yeah. For sure.
Everyone okay? This one? Use group five is in the form-based districts. Lodging is not a use listed. It's obviously a use that, that exists in the form-based districts and one that we get a lot requests for. It previously was required to go through the PUD process. This was, this use was intended to be in the form-based districts in the use group five, and for some reason it was an oversight and it was missed. And that we find that adding lodging to the code would be consistent with the master plan as well as what the intent of these form-based districts really are. So with that said, we propose to add lodging to use group five, which these are the uses allowed in use group five.
And I can tell you how this came about, that we realized it wasn't theirs. We have, we have people coming to the counter, setting up a meeting, hey, I want to put a hotel in the Big Beaver form-based district, can I do it? Look down. Um, well, it's not listed. It's kind of sort of multifamily residential, but not, you know, we, so we're, clearly we want, we want hotels in the Big Beaver form-based district, but it's not, it's not listed. So it's, it makes for an uncomfortable discussion at the counter.
Yeah.
But not to prolong this, but the kind of lodging that is currently being built in most communities, they're going to want parking and driving in front of their hotel, and they're not really hotels, they're great big houses that people stay in for very short term. I mean, they're, they're wood construction and.
Well, we're going to get into that in a second here, is extended state facilities, isn't that just one? Another type. And this, you're right, and we've actually had a few, we've had a few applications come in and meet with Brent and I to discuss lodging and hotels in, in the, in the Big Beaver district, and, and they are willing to comply with the form-based requirements.
Good. We just need them to apply.
Well, just trying to help.
Okay. Everyone okay with this? This really came about with our discussion with the Big Beaver PUD, and this is a discussion in regards to is the 20% landscape requirement for more of these urban form-based areas, is it really applicable and/or appropriate if we're really trying to develop more compact urban-style development? As everyone's aware, the Big Beaver PUD had, I believe it was 14% landscaping?
For the commercial component.
For the commercial component alone, taking the residential is much greater than, than 20%. But we started looking into it based on the discussion from the planning commission, whether the 20% really is appropriate for the urban area. And we looked at other ordinances that, that have good reputations in the landscaping, architecture, landscape, architectural community, and this includes the city of Omaha and the city of Chicago. And so as such, we recommend reducing it from 20% to 15% in the form-based districts.
What's in that, I don't know.
I didn't, I didn't look in on it. So this is, I'll walk you through our change, and I have an example of how, how this would So supplemental to section 13.02e1, which A is, which is the 20% requirement, this would be represent, this would reduce that to 50%. And of that, 25% of the required landscape area may be brick, stone, pavers, or other public plaza elements, but should not include any parking area or required sidewalks. If you remember, of that 14%, a, a percentage of that was the hardscape area, the public plaza, that we counted towards that 14%. In addition, 25% of the required landscaping may be relieved or may be reduced with a sustainable design option as outlined in section 12.01.
That brink should be changed to brick?
It's not brink, it's brick.
Got it. Thank you. So here's an example. For a site area that's 100,000 square feet, of 15%, they require 15,000 square feet of landscaping. Of the 15, of the 15%, 50% of it has to be typical green scape landscaping, this would be 75,000 square feet. Of the remaining 75,000 square feet, 75, 100 square feet, thank you, of the remaining 75, 100 square feet, 25% can be hardscape, so it'd be the 37, 100. And they can get a reduction of up to 25% of the 15 to get, of the 37 to get, to get down through the sustainable design option. This is for sites that are very limited in terms of the area they can put in hardscape, or sorry, landscape, and this would require them to go through and run the commission and provide some sustainable development options. So this is a limit, this would, this would ensure some greenscape, but also allow flexibility for the applicant as well the planning commission to work with the applicant in reducing.
Up tails into what we talked about a little earlier, with that parking. You wouldn't have to do the hardscape, but you, but if you did, you could want to, you could.
Yeah.
But does, does this then indicate that the 3750 can be all hardscape? If there, if the 25% of the 15% required landscape can be hardscape, and they go with the sustainable development, and they only need 3750, can it all be hardscape? And they still meet their 3750? Okay. It says we need 15,000 square feet of landscape.
Yes.
But 50% of the 15% has to be green space.
Right.
25% of the 15 can be hardscape.
Yep.
3750. 25% of the 15% can be relieved through sustainable development. Does that mean that if they go with sustainable development, what was the landscape requirement can all be hardscape?
No. They are, they have, they are required to at least 50% of the site has to be greenscape. 25% of that 15% can be hardscape, and the sustainable design option committee can reduce that, up to, up to 25%, can reduce the total site landscaping if they provide compatible sustainable development options. So at least 75% of the, of the total has to be installed either in hardscape and/or greenscape.
Yeah. The, the, the sustainable development provisions provide so much, so much flexibility and allow for so much creativity that, I'm trying to think, think through this. I guess theoretically they could do, I hope I'm not contradicting you, theoretically they do 3750 hardscape. The other 3750, I guess theoretically could be a form of hardscape, because the sustainable development provisions give so much flexibility. But whatever they do, hardscape has to be compensated for in another, in a, in a different fashion through rain gardens and whatnot, and it's, it's really hard, it's really hard to, because it's really a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
So I guess theoretically, half of it could be hardscape.
So with a green roof or something like that, fall onto that door, so you could actually interiorize it.
Maybe a fountain.
Rain gardens, rain barrels, a green roof. There's all kinds of different techniques.
At a minimum, we're going to get 70, you're going to have to do at least 75% of this 15,000. This 25% is discretionary based on the discussion with the sustainable development mission.
You've given you guys a lot of responsibility here.
I just hope they ask for it. That's good. I like that.
Okay. I forgot why we're here. Can I go back?
Keep going back?
That's good. So someone looking at 15 instead of the previous?
20, 20.
Yep. And it allows some, it allows more flexibility, because it's form-based and more, more kind of a urban.
Can, can this be modified to include the fact that it must be maintained as approved on the site plan? Because we have a huge history in this city of people putting landscaping in, and two years later, they cut it down and nothing ever gets replaced.
That's in there now. That's been, that's in our landscape provisions now.
Okay.
We look at it, we look at landscaping, a tree, if you propose a tree, it's the same as proposing a dumpster screen. If the tree goes away, you're obligated to replace the tree. Just like if a dumpster screening goes away, you're obligated to replace the dumpster screen. Just because it's living material, you're obligated to maintain that in perpetu, in perpetuity.
So we said it's been there for the last 20 years, so that we had gas stations with some landscaping around.
Everyone clear on this? Everyone okay with it? All right, we're, we're through our, through the six we wanted to get to tonight. We can keep going.
Give you more, she had to move it more. Seven's easy.
Give you another 20 minutes.
The seventh recommendation is to reduce the driveway width. Currently, we're, you're required 12 feet in width for a drive, drive-through, drive aisles, and we're requesting to reduce this to 10. This is consistent with what we adopted with financial drive-throughs on Big Beaver. We reduced the drive-out width to 10 feet. And the reason for this really is for two reasons. One, cars are naturally go slower through a drive-through aisle, because there's stuff on the left and there's stuff on the right typically. And secondly, the 10-foot is really necessary for one-way traffic. Drive-throughs are only one-way, they're not two-way, so you don't need the 12-foot that you normally need with the two, or 24-feet with the two-way, divided by two is 12. So we find that reducing the width will not cause additional traffic conflicts. It allows additional area for both building and landscaped area, and also will have the natural added effect of reducing automobile speed when it's a more tighter, more confined area. And again, this is, this is consistent with what we did for the Big Beaver form-based district.
Just a question, I'm curious, would this have made any difference in whether the Tim Hortons at Square Lake and John, do you wonder would have been approved or not?
Well, that's a tight site. Uh, well, that's a tight site.
I know it's a tight one.
But especially for tighter sites like that, two feet makes a huge difference.
Two, two feet on a ten-car stacking lane, yeah, makes a, that's a lot of square footage.
I mean, it doesn't sound like it's much, but, but.
So it could make a difference?
It could, it could, when you, especially if you have, if you have like, uh, some of these dual ordering stations and that, or, or you've got a bank drive-through with three windows and an ATM, or two windows and an ATM, you start, that's six feet. That, that's, that's, that's a lot of, a lot of space. That's, uh, that's more than half a parking space width.
Do we ever hear from that developer anymore, the one that, you know, that we turned?
Not recently. He's indicated he's gonna submit, he just hasn't yet.
Maybe he knows about this, that could difference.
I gotta comment. You know, I just, I printed off of the webs- website, the Ford F-250. It's, uh, from ear to ear, it's eight foot nine inches, almost nine foot wide. So if it's a ten-foot wide thing, you got two F-250s coming down the line, they've got six inches to, to bang mirrors. That's really tight. And I know from, at the Chase Bank on Big Beaver, when I take my van through that, I've got like three inches on each side of their poles to clear. It's really, you know, it's, it's a creep along, you know, nudge here, nudge there, so I don't know, you know, those are probably ten-foot, I don't know. I didn't measure it tonight, but.
Yeah, I don't know what the width is. I'm, I'm thinking of, when I look, look at the, uh, the width, I think of our parking spaces. Our parking spaces required with Detroit is nine and a half feet. Uh, we're actually, with, most communities, the parking width is nine feet. We're six inches wider than most, than most communities. I, I researched online and, and, uh, so this is an extra foot, you're going really slowly, so I, I agree with you. There, there are vehicle, Hummers, there's not a lot of Hummers left, but there's Hummers and there's pickup trucks there. But that truck's gonna have issues parking in our nine and a half foot wide parking spaces as well. You know, we're, I don't, and I don't think you're suggesting that we make our parking spaces all ten or eleven or twelve feet wide, so. I, I don't know, do, do we, do we keep twelve foot wide for the one guy out of however many that happens to have a excessively wide truck?
I don't, I don't think we design our ordinance for the person that drives a Sherman tank, I mean. But I, I see F-150 and F-250 pickup trucks parked in the Somerset structures all the time, and those parking spaces are only nine feet wide, so they, they obviously have figured out how to drive them without hitting anything.
I certainly hope he doesn't park next to me.
That's true.
I won't park next to him. But most of the new pickup trucks with the big wide mirrors also have electric retractors on them, so that when you go through a drive-through, you can retract your mirrors and they fold in.
Well, typical garage door, single garage door, it's eight foot.
That's true.
So, that, that car would never go through a garage door, if that's what, what it is. So we can't design for.
That's a good point. I mean, there, there are gonna be vehicles that are gonna have to drive really slow, and that's, maybe that's okay.
I've designed parking structures not for trucks, and we have them limited in height for that purpose.
That's what those yellow bars are across.
The weight and everything else may be designed for cars, not for trucks.
And that is usually open on one side as well, so, you know, it's not lock-down, pull the pole, and you gotta drive through the box, so.
I don't see a problem with this.
Yeah. This is, Ben's forcing me to do this one. Um, so our, our IB district, it, it basically says now that it allows essentially everything except single-family detached, uh, single-family detached homes. For, in terms of multi-story development, it says that multifamily developments are permitted in IB, so, as long as they're two to eight stories in height. Two to eight stories. The, the, the challenge, I think, here is, and I've been asked this question by developers. There's a, there's a one-story building that's sitting vacant. Can I do multifamily? Can I put, can I put a, you know, multifamily in that? And no, you gotta be two stories. So right now, essentially, this does not, the IB district does not allow multifamily development of one story. And I, my feeling is, if we wanna kinda reinvent the IB, we wanna utilize some of the, some of these vacant buildings, we should allow one-story multifamily residential.
Yep, I agree.
That's, that's where this, this comes from. Now, what this does is, uh, it allows one-story multifamily residential uses as permitted uses for conversion of existing buildings. So if someone, if there's, if someone buys a property that's one-story, demolishes it and says, "Now, I wanna put up multifamily", you're going at least two. Or you're gonna put retail or office on the first floor residential above. That's okay. Now it's a two-story building. But for conversion of existing buildings that are sitting there now, if you wanna convert it to a one-story multifamily, you can do that. That, that's where this comes from. And you thought they wouldn't like this one?
I knew they'd love it.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
How many spaces are in the city are, and could potentially fall into this?
How many buildings?
Hundreds.
Hundreds. And we've got, I mean, our provisions, I've thought about this a lot, and I, there's, there's, there's a couple of, uh, there's some, some subdivisions, and I say subdivision, they're industrial subdivisions, where there's a significant number of buildings that are for lease or for sale. And, you know, the potential for art, for arti- artist col- colony, live-work units, and, you know, some of these projects really taking root and, and developing neighborhoods with character and personality, I think it's there. I, I think they're, when you start introducing residential into these industrial parks, that's kind of a game changer. And now we're to, now we're talking about some really creative things happening. I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not anticipating that, you know, every second building is gonna be used for multifamily, but it, it adds one more option for, for people, for, for owners to do something different with their property other than res- other, other than industrial.
Okay. Next one is amend the duration for special, for outdoor special events from four days to seven days. And this actually came from, um, Paul Evans, who, who handles this issue. And he says a lot of times he gets complaints because um, we, the current ordinance limits outdoor special events to four days, and that includes cleanup, the event itself, as well as setup. And oftentimes, people find that they need additional time. So what we're recommending is you extend this from four to seven days, and that seven days would include everything from, from cleanup to setup of the event, um, holding the event as well as cleanup. We did run this by, um, engineering department and then public safety facilities, and they didn't find any concern about additional service requirements as a result of extending, uh, the outdoor special event. They still have to come and get permits, still have to get reviewed by city, just extends the allowance from four to seven days.
Some, some places they do a special event, they get one of these huge tents. It takes two days to put a tent on. By the time you put, put the tent, it takes two days to put up and a day to put it down, that's three of your days. So you got one day that you can use it. This way, it allows you to extend and, and more realistic.
What was the intent of this?
Of why we chose a four days or chose a limitation?
Why we chose to have that, period.
Because we had, we've had, we had a significant outdoor special event that had to get a variance. It has to get, it's had to get a variance every year.
I understand that, but I think that the intent, as I understood, it was discourage some of the other non-desirable activities that could come to our city, correct? Some of the sit-ins, some of the other.
I think what you're, I think what you're, what you're alluding to is our, um,
The original intent of having this ordinance was to discourage that.
Yeah, this is, this is different. I forget the name of the.
Farmers markets?
The farmers markets, the oil change guy, the guy that sells the Pistons jerseys when they win the championship.
Temporary retail.
This is only, this is outdoor special event, this is very temporary. This is like a one-off, like for a weekend.
Oh, I understand. It's Troy Days.
Right.
Had to come before us.
Right.
At, at the ZBA.
Right.
And they're, they're the ones that asked for the extension also at the time, for setup, for that purpose, and that, that makes a lot of sense. But the intent of this, I think, is to discourage the sit-ins at whatever, wherever park they wanted to go to, Bullard Park or wherever, and they needed a permit, and we wanted to discourage that. Is that correct?
The intent of the permit you're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood totally. The intent of the permit is to eliminate the RIFRAF.
Right.
You've gotta go through the proper channels and make sure that you've put thought into it, so it's gonna be safe, it's gonna have, it's gonna be safe. Health, public health, safety, and welfare. Exactly, yes.
Any issues extending it from four to seven? Res zoning standards. Um, the current ordinance does not have any rezoning standards. There are rezoning standards for conditional rezoning, but not for, let's say, straight rezoning. And the purpose of putting, including the standards is there is just to give planning commission and ultimately the city council when it goes before them some, something to measure the rezoning on. And these, some of these standards conclude, consisting of the master plan, impact from public facilities, et cetera. These are very closely tailored to the conditional use, or conditional, I'm sorry, conditional rezoning standards, but they are slightly tailored to a straight rezoning. Um, and again, the reason is really to give guidance for the planning commission to evaluate rezonings, because you don't have anything right now to, to, to address standards for rezonings. And so in addition, as, as staff consultants, we have nothing, we have no standards to go by in terms of rezoning. And so this is just to give everyone a little more protection moving forward.
As well as applicants that, that come and say, "What do I have to do to rezone? Well, here's the standards."
Right.
Hey, it's a good idea.
You want to go with it?
Yep, I'm good with it. A lot of head nodding.
Okay.
Just keep going.
Oh, go back one. Can I ask one other question as it relates to the permitting for the events?
Yes.
There was a question, one dot, a three-year, do they have to come every year? Do we have anything in there that says they have to come every year?
They got, they got a, a permission from the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
To, for this for three years.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
Because one did, Troy, Troy Days, I think did. Now, the church has an event, and they wanna come in with the three-year.
Why would that be granted? What's the hardship?
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
No, but they, they did.
Why they grant that?
Yeah.
Apparently, you don't have to have a hardship for every possible condition. I don't, I shouldn't have believed that.
Why would you grant it anyways? I mean, is it a big deal to come in?
I'll give you an example. A tiny big ham would come in, we're in the zoning board of appeals.
What's that?
A funny big ham would come in each year
Yeah.
For permission to use the back alley for a special sale during Christmas selling your hands. I think the board finally kept coming in year after year after year for the same thing. It was always granted, and they said, "Why not extend it for three years and..."
Kmart down, Kmart down at Livernoy and Maple had to come in every single year to be allowed to display flowers in spring.
Yeah, that's a slippery slope. If you do it for one, why would you do it for?
I agree with you.
I mean, what, you know, a year is a year.
Walmart didn't have to, but Kmart did.
No, it's purely discretionary. I was just trying to understand why the ZBA would, what did they, what was the case why? That they would say three years, why not four? Why not two?
Where do you stop?
We were a little bit by three years, I believe, when the, the ordinance had that tag.
Well, just ask how was the structure?
Yeah, it's, I don't know, I'm not familiar with that case, but it's, it seems to me that if, if they got a variance to extend seven days, or it's no, they're no longer gonna need the variance to, to do that. I don't know the particulars of the case you're talking about though, because I, I'm not pleased of the ZBA.
No, every year they have to come before the ZBA to get the permission to.
For extension.
Not for the extension, to actually, my understanding was to actually.
Hold the event?
Hold the event.
Hold the event, yeah.
And I think that's appropriate.
And that is, I thought it was appropriate too, just to protect the, uh.
Yeah, I'd have to look into it. What, 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 which, uh, project, what, uh, event was that?
That was the Troy Days, got the three-year. Now, the other churches are also asking, uh, they're gonna be coming in. Now, I'm not familiar with Kmart or any of the others.
That's what I was on, Kmart used to have to come in all the time for their outdoor flower sales.
My understanding is, is that one of the things that, one of the events that spearheaded this was Troy, was, I don't think it's called Troy Days anymore, but Troy Family Days.
Yeah.
That, um, it was not, it did not allow them because of the, the scope of the event. The four days just was not enough, enough time.
Well, that, that makes sense. I, I, I fully agree with you. I'm in charge of the event that we had, my church, and it, you're right, it takes two to three days just to set up. Took longer than that, but, uh, just a tents I'm talking about, let alone all the other activities.
But was Troy Family Days actually granted a three-year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
And there was no question?
So they don't have to come before us for anything, for three years.
You have to do it for that, and if I can't, how are you, how are you gonna have to do it for everybody else?
I don't know. I'm asking that question. That's why I bring it up.
Is there an application fee for this?
Yes.
So.
There's an application and a fee.
To give a three-year would save an application fee for three, for three years if you got approval for a three-year?
I guess it would save an application. It would save, it would save an application fee. You've gotta make sure you, you get your application in on time, and then we, you know, there's, there's the time and cost. Put your plans together, et cetera, so it would, I guess it would, it would eliminate.
Wouldn't that, I mean, they're going in front of the ZBA to get permission to hold the event.
Right.
But they're coming in to your department to be able to have a seven-day variance to set up the tents and tables or whatever it might be. So they'd still have to pay your fee, but they'd have, you'd have to do it every year, even though they don't have to go in front of them to get permission to do the event?
They, um, well, I suppose they have to submit the application fee anyways, like you said, but the, our ordinance, they follow our ordinance now, because it was for this recent, I believe for the most recent Troy Family Days. And they can only get, go four days, they needed the extension for the seven. Again, I wasn't at the meeting, I'm not that familiar with it, so I'd have to, I'd have to do some research if you want me to.
Well, the city actually gets less revenue now under this situation where they grant it.
Well, it's not, we're not talking about a lot of money. It's not a lot of money.
No. No, I don't think it is.